Okay, it is six o'clock and I'm calling the Iowa City Council Former Meeting and Order. Roll call please.
Alter.
Here.
Bergus.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Here.
Teague.
Y-line.
Here.
Okay, second item that is proclamation and now we have two A Food Waste Prevention Week. I will be reading that. Okay, whereas according to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources 2022 Iowa Material Characterizations Study, approximately 20% of material disposed in the Iowa City landfill are food waste items. And whereas landfill food waste produce methane and bottom gas, greenhouse gas, and whereas food waste reductions ensure the water, energy, and land resources required to produce food are not waste. Whereas efforts to save quality food from being waste support local system to feed community members in the needs. And whereas the city of Iowa City beremoed environmental sustainability through reducing food waste and the resources, add the sources, sorry. What now therefore, I am Zaher Saleh, the Mayor of Pro Tem and behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, here I proclaim the week of April 7th to 13, 2025 as Food Waste Prevention Week in Iowa City and urge Iowa community member to recognize the importance of reducing food waste to strengthen our Iowa City community and to reduce climate impact. Here to accept is Jason Hubble, our City Engineer.
Unfortunately, our Resource Management staff aren't able to be here tonight, so I'm going to do my best to fill in for them and highlight some of the important work that they do. My name is Jason Hubble, City Engineer, and on behalf of the Resource Management Division, I want to thank you for this proclamation. These staff members work hard to highlight the importance of food waste prevention and its benefits to our community. This includes outreach and education, as well as great local partnerships to increase awareness. One example of these partnerships is the program with table to table called Love Food, Fight Waste. This program offers resources ranging from videos for household food waste prevention to ways to volunteer in the local food rescue system, and all of this information can be found on the city's website. These efforts, along with composting, all make meaningful impact on what ends up or doesn't in the landfill. And so, again, I want to thank you for your support of this proclamation and the city's efforts to reduce food waste in our community. Thank you.
The second proclamation will be National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and this will be read by Council Burgers.
Whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. And whereas, the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support, services, and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. And whereas, kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma-informed care that meets survivors where they are. And whereas, through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. And whereas, kinship reminds us of the strength that comes from connection, the importance of listening to every voice, and the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Bruce Teague of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through 12th, 2025 to be National Crime Victims' Rights Week in Iowa City. This proclamation reaffirms our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and creating a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone.
We have no one to accept that, so we go to the next one. National Library Week, and this will be read by our newer, and I would like to welcome Oliver to the council, and I think he will be a great add to our city. I forget to do this in the beginning, sorry.
Thank you. This is for National Library Week. Whereas libraries serve as a vital hub for connection, learning, and exploration, and are dedicated to ensuring equitable access to information and services for all community members, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas, libraries provide prioritized privacy, defend the right to read freely, champion intellectual freedom, and serve as cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas, libraries provide free and equitable access to books, are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding civic engagement and shared community goals while preserving our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas, libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. And whereas, Iowa City Public Library is a center of community life that accepts people of all ages with information, engages them with the world of ideas and with each other, and enriches our community by supporting learning, promoting literacy, and encouraging creativity. And whereas, an Iowan authored the Library Bill of Rights, Iowa has more public libraries per capita than any other state in the nation, and over 74% of Iowans own at least one library card. And whereas, libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. So now, therefore, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 6th through April 12th, 2025 to be National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit the Iowa City Public Library and celebrate the access and opportunities provided by ICPL services and programming.
Do you accept?
Oh. And here to accept this proclamation is Angela Pilkington. So give it up again.
Hi, thank you guys so much for this honor. I am Angie Pilkington, and I have had the pleasure of serving as a Children's Services Coordinator for the city of Iowa City for the last decade. And those that know me know that I think every day is National Library Day, so thank you, and we do encourage everyone to come. In the last year, we had over 1.2 million books checked out from your local library and over half a million visitors to our site just up the road. So thank you again for this proclamation. The Iowa City Public Library is honored to be recognized during National Library Week as libraries are essential to thriving communities. We serve as spaces where everyone can explore ideas, ask questions, and access information freely. We support literacy at every stage of life and ensure that every person, regardless of background, can find the resources to learn, grow, and connect with the world around them. We are proud to safeguard intellectual freedom and provide a welcoming space that promotes curiosity, creativity, and lifelong learning. Thank you guys so much for your support every day.
Thank you.
Item number three, Consent Calendar. Approve of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar? Item 3 to 7, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to pull off item 6E if we could, before we approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I think if the item is, we are not going to vote for it.
Oh.
So we can discuss it while we are, discuss it as an item.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good.
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve item 3 to 7?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmson.
Move by Mo, second by Harmson. Public discussion. Council discussion.
Yeah, item 6E, the Assistance to Develop an Affordable Housing Pilot Project, I'd like to get a little bit more information on that. I think the staff memo is wonderful, but also just a better understanding of timeline and costs would be real helpful.
Rachel Carter from our Housing Authority can give you an overview and answer any questions.
Yeah, welcome, Rachel.
Hi, I'm Rachel Carter, and the Housing Administrator in the Housing Authority. This resolution is simply approving our procurement of a consultant to help us with a couple different items in Neighborhood and Development Services. The first of which is they'll help us essentially develop a strategic plan and a staffing plan in looking at legal, organizational structure, our financial capacity, what we're doing long-term to essentially develop a development arm of the Housing Authority, establish a development arm of the Housing Authority. I think that most of you know that we own and manage 116 properties currently, 110 of those are run as affordable housing units in some way, whether that's through public housing in the federal government or some home funds and then some locally funded projects that we run as affordable housing. And as we continue to grow in our, in our mission of providing affordable housing, we're really seeing the need to have some assistance in figuring out what our strategic plan going forward is and how we do that sustainably. So that's the first service that this consultant will provide. And secondly, this consultant is going to serve as our advisor and essentially our developer in helping us with the development project that we wrote we would complete in our Pro Housing Grant that we were awarded last summer. So they will help us develop through construction, design, and closeout of that project. We're anticipating 18 to 36 affordable rental housing units in that project, and they're going to help us learn how to do that. So we're more prepared to do that going forward. We continue to see that the need for affordable rental housing here is growing. We have over 1,000 households on our Housing Choice voucher program waitlist living or working in our jurisdiction that need subsidized and affordable rental housing, and there are few organizations who are doing this. So we see our role expanding in doing this, and we are looking for a consultant to help us do that sustainably and efficiently.
And so this consultant will come on board shortly, is it a year-long process? Or when will, I guess, the fiscal impact that would come to council, when would that happen?
Sure. Well, all the funds provided in this contract are through our Pro Housing Grant, so we've been awarded them from HUD. And the part of it, helping us develop an arm of the Housing Authority for housing development, they have a pretty tight timeline, they say six to nine months approximately for that, and giving us a strategic plan and how we continue to grow and what that growth looks like. The Affordable Housing Pilot Project, we anticipate expending it by the end of our Pro Housing, our Pro Housing Grant needs to be spent out by September of 2029, I believe, which means we'll be working robustly in developing and spending that money from now until then.
The pie wasn't clear with my question, the pilot program, that consultant will be done, and we'll know by next budget cycle how many more staff members or city dollars would need to be allocated to actually act as developer? Is that possible?
Yep. Yes, I think that we should know by then what that looks like in terms of staffing and growth ratios.
Great, thanks.
My own ignorance, so genuine question. Is the process of choosing a consultant the same as when we put an RFP out for construction? So we have to take the low bid? Or were there multiple applicants and you got to select? And if so, can you talk a little bit about what struck you with this consultant and their experience?
Yeah, it was, we put an RFP out for it, and we received three responses, I believe. We also had the opportunity to interview all the consultants, given their experience. We checked references. The specific consultant that we chose has a really strong national reputation. We've spoken to several housing authorities who have used them in establishing a development wing. They're well-versed. I think that many of you are aware that we recently entered into an agreement with a consultant for our public housing repositioning, and both of these RFPs were out concurrently. And we chose different consultants for the two projects, and they both speak really highly of each other, which is a positive reference, and there seem to be a lot of opportunities for those two services to work together. So we were able to interview, we checked references, and how they scored in our interview scores reflected greatly in how we chose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I guess I would just like to make a comment about this, and I just think, just wanted to thank the staff and the counselors and everybody for getting us to this point, because I think this is such a hugely needed part in not only our community, but so many communities that are, you know, we talk so much about affordable housing, I've heard people talk about affordable housing in Iowa City for 30 years as in, oh, it's getting out of control, you know? So I think that this is a way that we can really get to the root cause of the problem, community development, like what it means to democratize housing and how we can use like this community development wing to get in the business of building and managing properties and making sure that we have permanent affordability at, in a way that can be financially beneficial to the city. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for getting us to this point.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, it was exciting.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Okay, motion basis 6 to 6?
6 to 0, yeah.
To 0, I'm on it.
Pardon my procedural ignorance, everybody, but did, we just voted for the entire consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we can't go back and comment on anything else at this point? No?
No, I'm afraid not. There will be a later time at the end of the agenda that council members have an opportunity to comment.
Oh, you were saying something, sorry?
No, that's okay, thank you.
Okay, now I'm turning things to public comment. Item number eight, community comment. And this is only in person, comment will be allowed for community comment. Public comment for specific agenda items which must be directly related to the agenda item may be made in person or remote, but for the public comment only in person. So if you want to do public comment, you can just come forward to the podium. Please sign your name and state your name and the city you are from.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dan Cobble, and I live by the VA. I'm here tonight to talk about the University of Iowa Police Department. Specifically, I'm here to discuss the ways that the Iowa City Police Department helps UIPD quash legitimate criticism of the numerous ways UIPD has persecuted Iowa City's queer and trans communities. Almost a year ago, I stood before this board to talk about how ICPD seized my cellphone in relation to an investigation about a Twitter account parodying a UIPD detective who has a proven history of transphobia. This history is best exemplified by the fact that he filed charges against trans individuals for blocking traffic while not filing charges against cisgender protesters for blocking those same cars. It should be noted that some of those non-trans protesters were unmasked and known to this ICPD, ICPD, or, excuse me, were known to this UIPD detective. It should also be noted that nobody looking through the parody account's timeline would believe it was anything but satire. I was eventually charged with identity theft, witness tampering, and third-degree harassment, and a protective order was instituted. I was later charged with numerous contempt charges for the simple act of tweeting that this prejudiced public official is actively harming the Iowa City queer community. Last month, after pleading guilty to witness tampering, I received a six-month suspended sentence. I believe that deferred judgment would have been given to me had the victim in my case not been a police officer. At the sentencing hearing, most of the claims made by UIPD referred to things I was not charged for. I will admit that some of the things I have said or tweeted have been in poor taste, but I have never said or done anything related to this case, which have, which would leave a reasonable, reasonable person to fear for their safety or that of their family. The reason I'm here tonight is to reiterate my comments from last April. Bigoted officers such as those at UIPD are targeting your most vulnerable residents. However, the majority of elected officials in this county, who some of the people on this council, I think, are a part of that, have refused to condemn UIPD or the county attorney, who has been vocal in supporting the most prejudiced officers at the agency. The city of Iowa City has not only allowed this to happen, but is actively involved in silencing critics of UIPD such as myself. Your officers are probably going to try to charge me with contempt for making these comments, which would then cause my probation to be revoked and send me to jail for six months. I don't believe that people should be thrown into jail for criticizing the government, be that in the form of a satirical Twitter account or in the public comments at a city council meeting. Your citizens need you to stand up for them and just stand up to UIPD, because there are lots of bad things happening in this community. And it's, it's a really dark time nationally, statewide, and locally. So just please do what's right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to comment?
My name is Kevin Perez. I will not be available in two weeks, so I wanted to speak on 21 South Penn Street. I really, what I really want to say first of all is only one proposal was put in on time, and that's the Grand Rail Project. Another prob, you know, another skyscraper in town is not very good. I believe that as I stand here right now, both the Chauncey and Tower Plazas are both being foreclosed on by Green State Bank. Hasn't been in the papers, but it's on Iowa Courts online. So two of the three large buildings in downtown Iowa City are in foreclosure. It's probably not a very good precedence, since they got millions of dollars in TIP money. The Grand Rail Project is not asking for any TIP money, so I don't believe that in, they want to pay more for the property. The, what I want to say, you know, there's like a 12 to 13 million dollar difference or more between the Grand Rail Project and Iceberg or whatever, Salida Iceberg, which, you know, and they came in late, which you set the rules up, and then all of a sudden they put a proposal in, and a couple days after one gets kicked out, doesn't seem very fair, you know, breaking the rules like that. Let me see, what else I want? You know, the fact that Grand Rail wants to use a lot of, you know, their emphasis was on local architects, local builders, local developers, it seems like a much, much better project. The size of the, you know, if you look around at the size of the buildings around there, it fits right in. It's really well thought out, just a much, much better project. And I don't know if right now is the time to be loaning people, you know, tens of millions of dollars at this time in our economics, you know, just doesn't seem right. So thank you for that, but I just, I just want to emphasize how much better that project is and how much more sense it makes, since two of the three high-rises that we have are in foreclosure. And that's, you know, and the other, the other thing I think about high-rises, it's really elite, it's kind of elitism that doesn't really fit into the vibe of Iowa City, you know, being on the top, you know, top floor with your penthouse, and it doesn't really work. So clearly because two of the three buildings are in foreclosure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, now I'm going to go and close the public comment. Okay. Planning, item nine, planning and zoning matter. Rezoning north of Mirrose Avenue and east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard, ordered and ordens or conditionally rezoning approximately 7.2 acres of privately located north of Mirrose and east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard from interim development, single-family residential zone to mixed-use zone. And our city attorney will be recusing himself from this item, and we will be going by our, his assistance. So do look. And now I will open the public hearing. And we will start with comment from the staff, followed by the council questions for now.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council Members Anne Russett, Senior Planner. Here's an aerial of the subject property. It's located along two arterial streets near Highway 218. To the north is Saint Andrew Presbyterian Church, to the northwest is some multifamily residential, and to the east is some existing single-family. Here's the zoning map. The surrounding properties are a mix of single-family and multifamily zoning, and the subject property is currently for sale, and the owners have expressed an interest in rezoning to provide more clarity and certainty to future buyers regarding development potential. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to mixed-use, which allows both a mix of residential and non-residential uses. The zone does not allow more intense non-residential uses such as bars, gas stations, and industrial uses. There are two criteria used to review rezonings. The first is consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the second is compatibility with the existing neighborhood. In regards to consistency with the comprehensive plan, in 2016, the future land use map of the comprehensive plan was amended for this subject property, and it changed the land use designation from two to eight dwelling units per acre to office commercial. In this resolution for this amendment, there was a whereas statement that noted that this site would be appropriate for a commercial office or CO1 zone, as it would provide a transition between lower intensity residential uses and more intense uses. Due to the similarities between the CO1 and MU zones, staff finds that the proposed mixed-use zone aligns with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan also includes a number of goals and strategies that support the rezoning, including encouraging compact and contiguous development, supporting infill development, and encouraging a diversity of housing types. In terms of neighborhood compatibility, the surrounding properties are a mix of both single-family, multifamily, and institutional land uses, such as the religious institution to the north. The property is located at the intersection of two major streets and is very close to Highway 218. There's also a 30-foot pipeline easement that runs on the eastern portion of the property that acts as a natural buffer between any new development and the existing single-family to the east. And lastly, the mixed-use site development standards that would be applied to any development on this property would regulate things such as surface parking, screening, and lighting. And here's a, here's a map that was provided by the applicant, I just wanted to show, here's the location of that 30-foot pipeline easement on the eastern portion of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending one condition for this rezoning related to transportation, and that is that the owner needs to reconstruct the median on Camp Cardinal Boulevard to allow access to the site and also construct a dedicated left turn lane on Camp Cardinal Boulevard. In terms of next steps, we're at the rezoning stage right now. If the property owner decides to move forward with the subdivision, that would also come before council. Any development at a minimum would require a final sensitive areas development plan and a site plan and a building permit, which would be reviewed by staff. The applicant did hold a Good Neighbor Meeting on January 23rd, and based on review of the relevant general criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with one condition. At its February 19th, 2025 meeting by a vote of five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval with the staff-recommended condition, which is noted here on the slide, that the owner would need to reconstruct the median to allow access to the site. And the conditional zoning agreement has been signed. That concludes my presentation, I'll turn it back to Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Anne. Any question for her?
One question about the site, actually, can you go, I'm curious about the turn lane access to the site and the pipeline, how is that all happening at the same spot in the same time? Like you just put a road right on top of the, that's the access to the site, right? It seems to be landlocked to the north and to the east by other properties?
Yeah, so access is from Camp Cardinal Boulevard, so any access to the site would be probably in?
Anywhere there. Anywhere there.
Yeah.
And then the second question is, I guess, more procedural, and that would be, looks like there's a lot of topography on the site. Can you remind me what the rules are for when sensitive areas reviews come back to council?
If, they are only reviewed by council if it triggers a Level 2 review. If it's a Level 2 review, it requires an OPD rezoning. So in this case, they've just asked for a rezoning to MU, which doesn't trigger a sensitive areas review. They would be required to prepare an exhibit as part of their site plan, though.
Okay, if they wanted, because there's just so much hill, it seems like there's a lot of hillside there, and we might see this again with a more, with an actual proposal.
Potentially.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Another question?
And this is right now, there's, the owners just want to make this more attractive to potential developers, correct? There is no one in the wings?
Yes.
That means there's no, like, proposals. Okay. What kind of pipeline is it? Are you, do you know?
It's a, I think it's a gas pipeline.
A gas pipeline, okay.
Just following up on that, Anne, you mentioned the woodlands, I think, on the far eastern edge, and then the pipeline easement there. Is it safe to assume that nothing east of the pipeline could be developed on this site?
That's what I would anticipate happening, because I haven't read the easement agreement for the pipeline, but there's, there's probably no development activity that would be allowed within that area. Certainly no buildings, probably no paving as well. So any, and this is something maybe the applicant can address as well. We anticipate all of the development activity to occur in kind of the flat area that is away from these areas here that you see in green and definitely away from the pipeline. Thank you.
Any other question to Anne? Okay, I just want to ask if the applicant is here and would like to do any, like, comment on this?
Hello, Mike Welch with Sheemak and Holland. I worked with St. Andrew to prepare the rezoning application and can kind of, I guess, start by just touching on a couple of the questions that were asked. Yeah, the pipeline is a petroleum pipeline. It's owned by one, one OK, so one Oklahoma. They do periodically, will come through every couple of years and clear any brush and trees from their pipeline easement. But yeah, anything east of that, of that pipeline, we don't anticipate being able to develop just because of that, that pipeline being there. Josh, to your question about sensitive areas and slopes, we did look at, at that with the, with the owner to see what was there. And the areas that are wooded and the areas that are, that have the regulated and steep slopes, they are off on those edges, and there's, to our way of looking at it, there's not a lot of potential to actually develop in those areas. So that's kind of how we went forward with just a, a non-OPD rezoning to get to that spot. And if anyone has any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay. Now I will open it to the public discussion. If someone here would like to address this matter, you can come forward. Or if you are online, please raise your hand. I see none in person and no one in public and online, I mean. I guess would like to add, before I close the public hearing, I would like to ask the council if they are inclined to vote with the planning and zoning. Okay, close the public hearing. And now I would like to get, like, first consideration for this item. May I have a motion for first consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Teague? Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. Okay. Wait a minute for... Okay, item number nine B, rezoning of North Governor Street. An ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 5.49 acres of property located between North Dutch and North Governor Street from medium-density, single-family residential zone to high density, sorry, high-density, single-family residential zone, medium-density, multifamily residential zone, and multifamily residential zone to high-density, single-family residential zone with a bland development overlay for approximately 17 acres and to medium-density, multifamily residential zone with a bland development overlay for approximately 5.2 acres. And I will open the public hearing. Now I will turn it to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Some updates for the benefit of council and for the members of the public. There has been a valid protest petition filed, thus requiring a supermajority of the city council in order for this rezoning to pass. That means six votes. That means six votes regardless of whether there are only six of you present tonight or if there are seven present. Furthermore, the developer, as a result of the absence of Mayor Teague, has requested that this matter be deferred to the 15th. If council is inclined to do so, I would encourage council to do that now as opposed to accepting either the staff's presentation or the public comment, none of which would be heard by the mayor.
What council think?
I would make a motion to defer until April 15th.
And I would second that.
I think so. I need the motion to be, continue the public hearing and defer the first consideration to April 15. That's a motion. And we have the second?
Yes.
Moved by Josh, I think, moved by Mo.
By Harmson, seconded by Mo.
Second by Mo. Okay, and I continue the public hearing. I think we don't do anything else.
Well, we need to vote on the motion, which can just be a voice vote.
Yeah, can I have a voice vote for the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think we close. We, that's it. We don't do anything else.
That's it. Again, the public hearing remains open and will be continued on the, on the 15th.
Yes, we're going to have this item back on the 15th. Now we go to the regular agenda item, item number 10A, Building Code Update. An ordinance amending Title 17, Chapter 1, Building Code by adopting the International Building Code 2024 Edition, including Abenda K and the International Residential Code 2024 Edition, including Abenda B E and Abenda B O, and providing for certain amendment thereof and adopting Section 103, 61A of the Code of Iowa, the State Electrical Code, and Section 105.4, 1A of the Code of Iowa, the State Plumbing and Mechanical, mechanical codes to provide for the protection of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of Iowa City, Iowa. And this is our second consideration. May I, and the staff is requesting expedited action on this.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, at which it is to be finally passed and suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Wylen and second by Burgess. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. And now motion to adopt and adopt this. May I have a motion?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Second by Burgess. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. And 10B, Fire Code Update. An ordinance amending Title 7, Chapter 1, Fire Preventions and Protection by adopting the 2024 Edition of the International Fire Code to regulate and govern the safeguarding of life and property from fire, explosion, life safety risk, or health hazard. And this is also a second consideration where the staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two city, two city council meetings prior to the meeting, at which point it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Wylen and second by Mo. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. And now I would like a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Second by Burgess. Roll call, please.
Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. Item 10C, parking for people with physical disability. Ordinance amended Title 9, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 4, entitled Parking Regulation. Section 11, entitled Parking for People with Physical Disability to define the required access aside, I, as all, as a part of the parking space. This is also a second consideration. The staff is requesting expedited actions.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, at which it is to be finally passed and be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Wylen and second by Alter. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Wylen?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. May I have a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Moved by Mo, second by Burgess. Lower calls, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Wylen?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion basis six to zero. Item 11, Council Committee and Appointment. 11A, Graduate and Professional Student Government Organization. And this has been deferred from January 7. And we would like to appoint somebody to the council, to become a council design to the Graduate and Professional Student Government. And this is used to be held, I think Andrew Dunn was one that, so.
I volunteer.
All right, then, you made it easy. And this is a voice, like, word, or how is this going to be?
It is. I think the city manager wanted to address a broader related topic.
Just while we're on this item, former councillor Dunn also had two other appointments that you previously reassigned to keep those activities moving. I believe it was the Rules Committee and the Economic Development Commission. So I just want to check with council if you're content with the appointments as they stand after this, because everything will be filled, or if at a future meeting, you want to look at a reassignment now that we have councillor Wylen here with us. So staff can put it on a future agenda, or we can wait till January and do it at that time.
I think that's up to you.
I mean, I want to carry my weight. So if other people are on a bunch of these committees and I'm only on one, I would gladly take on more.
I think I can, I can give up my seat for the economic development. Do you want to take that?
Okay.
That'll have to be at a future meeting, just to be clear.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We do have a meeting coming up.
Then we have to go and do it, right?
Something in my calendar open. Do we proceed the meeting for that appointment?
We would have to go with the staff that's present, but we have not noticed up the assignment of, or reassignment of the Economic Development Committee.
Because it was Economic Development Committee and the Rules Committee. That's the only two, was, doesn't have to be all of them, but we can just talk about this next meeting, right?
We can place all the appointments on the next meeting. Is that right, Kelly? And, and you can decide if you want to keep them as is or trade or shuffle and... But we'll notice them all up for the next meeting if that's what I'm understanding.
Sound good.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll need, excuse me, a motion, a second, and a vote to assign councillor Wylen for the council liaison to the Graduate and Professional Student Government.
I move to appoint councillor Wylen to said position.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Carrick, so you are now the appointed person. Okay, item number 12, Council Appointment. 12A, Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission, when vacance to fill a four-years terms from April 7, 2025 to April 1, 2029. And council discussion on this.
Seems like two very qualified applicants. It sort of jumped out at me right away.
I was going to ask, as a reminder and perhaps an overview, that the Board of Appeals, the role that they perform? If somebody wants to remind me.
The Civil Service Commission.
Civil Service Commission.
Oh, my God. The one we're talking about, yes.
The Civil Service Commission, yeah.
Sorry, I was reading one thing and thought said the other. Yeah, just to get it over me.
Or you want somebody to talk about what they do?
Description of it, yeah.
Oh, you'd like a description of the Civil Service Commission? Sure. So they do several things. They approve the hiring process for civil service employees, and by that I mean testing procedures for firefighters and police officers, for example. They ultimately approve the hiring lists for those and other civil service positions from whom, or from which the hiring supervisor selects their employee candidates. And they listen to and adjudicate appeals of disciplinary matters up to and including termination. Those are the, I think, the biggest things.
Okay, any person to be?
They're both remarkable. I, I've noticed that, is it, Melissa has been on the commission in the past, is currently on Citizens Review Police Board, is looking to continue on, which is really admirable. Eleanor is not currently on any boards, so I'm sort of thinking maybe we incorporate somebody else who's remarkable in one of our commissions. So I would nominate Eleanor, but also think both would be remarkable. Support that?
Eleanor?
Odds?
May I have a motion to appoint Eleanor?
Move that Eleanor be appointed to the position on the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, moved by Mo, second by Harmson. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion basis six to zero. We go to 12B, Community Police Review Board. Community Police Review Board, when vacance to fill an unexhibitable term upon appointment January, June, 30, 2026. So council discussion, do you have any?
I have two thoughts. One is I think that all three good candidates, I think I was particularly impressed with both Maureen Braddock and Mary McCanns, particularly. A second issue, and maybe this is, I know this will come up for a different reason in the, in the next appointment, but as I've been following stuff in Des Moines, there was a bill that was still active that would take away our CPRB. So my, I'm wondering how the rest of the council feels about, do we appoint somebody now, knowing that it might be a one- or two-month appointment? Do we wait, or do we just go ahead and do it? I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I think it's, I think it's worth being intentional. What's the rest of the council have a feeling on this?
I think that because it's, it's a small gesture, hopefully not a gesture, hopefully this doesn't go through at the state. But I think that to go ahead with business as usual, and we have an unfilled appoint position and to fill it as soon as possible, and we have qualified candidates, we should do it.
As long as the people understand, like, you know, if they know, then I'm satisfied.
Absolutely.
That's a good point, but yeah.
Yes, okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, and I, I personally have been trying to keep up with this legislation. And I don't know, I can't get it like a temperature on, like... And I don't know, I can't get it like a temperature on, like, the strength it has. I know that it passed pretty...
Out of committee, I believe.
Passed, well, it passed the Senate, too. So, by a lot. So I feel like there's a good chance that we're going to see it happen, but, you know, if, if that happens, I mean, it's better to prepare as if it's not going to, I think.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
I like Maureen Braddock.
Maria? Okay, any support from beside Laura? Everyone? Okay, may I have a motion to appoint? Moved by Alter?
Second, Mo.
Second by Mo. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion basis six to zero. Housing and Community Development Item twelve C, Commission. Housing and Community Development Commission, two vacancies to fill unexpected term upon appointed, January, June, thirtieth, 2026. So I, I think everybody saw the memo from the commission requesting defer of this item. And I believe they have good reasoning. What do you guys think for deferring, so?
So, go ahead, please. I was going to say, so I, yes, I read the memo and I'm inclined to say, let's go with what they're recommending. I guess procedurally, is it a motion that we can make at this moment to, to make that change?
Yeah, I would, well, yes, I would suggest you make a, a motion to defer. I would not do it to April fifteenth because you're going to need to have time to have the Rules Committee be able to address whether there will be a change in the bylaws. The Rules Committee needs to approve those. For the benefit of the public, the request from HDC was to move from, I want to see nine members to seven, right? Yeah, nine members to seven. They're down two members now, so if we don't appoint, if that were to go through, they wouldn't need any appointments. So I'd have to look to see what the dates are in May. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, the commission's going to discuss this at their April twenty-first meeting. So if we need to work the Rules Committee in, I would suggest the second meeting in May might be the best time to, to defer.
Do you know what, do you know what date that is?
That would be the twentieth, May twentieth. So we're looking for a motion to defer to May twentieth. I make, I move to defer to May twentieth.
Moved by Mo, second by Wyline. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, six to zero. All right, item number thirteen, announcement of vacancies, new.
I'm sorry, Mayor Portem, before we move on, we'd like to have a motion to accept correspondence on that topic.
Motion to accept correspondence.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
You say that?
Aye.
Motion basis six to zero. Okay, item number thirteen.
I seconded.
Yeah, do we have to vote? I'm sorry, that's the part I missed. Did you say, I'm sorry, I missed the vote. Did you say all in favor and we had a oral vote?
Yes, all in favor, yeah, we said that.
I don't know what's going on down here. Yeah.
Josh is just holding his own vote. Okay.
Okay. Item thirteen, announcement of vacancies, new. Thirteen A, announcement of vacancies, new, Airborne Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2029. Community Police Review Board, two vacancies to fill four-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2029. Hostile Preservation Commission, at large, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2028. And Hostile Preservation Commission, Summit Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2028. Housing and Community Development Commission. Do we do that, too?
I'm sorry?
For the Housing, Housing and Community Development Commission, we still advertise this?
Yes, we should go ahead.
Okay. Housing and Community Development Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2028. Library Board of Trustee, three vacancies to fill six-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2020, twenty thirty-one. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill five-year's term, July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, twenty thirty. Application must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May thirteen, 2025. Item fourteen, announcement of vacancies previous. Fourteen A, announcement of vacancies previous, Airborne Zone, Board of Agreement, one vacancy to fill a five-year's terms from June first, 2024 to December thirtieth, 2028. Airborne Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year's term from June first, 2024 to December thirtieth, 2029. Board of Abil, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill unexpected, unexpected term upon appointed from December thirtieth, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term, July first, 2022 to June thirtieth, 2025. Hostile Preservation Commission, Woodland Avenue, one vacancy to fill a three-year's term from one, 2024 to June, from July first, 2024 to June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-second. And all these vacancies will remain open until filled. Now, item number fifteen, city council information. Any council member want to report a meeting attended or upcoming meeting, community event, or any item of interest at this time?
I'll just mention, several of us had the opportunity yesterday to attend the Trans Day of Visibility events at College Green Park. Very impactful, very moving, some incredible courage in speaking out from some of our members, trans members of our community and was really impressed by the organization of that event and the way in which it really, I think, spoke to the moment that we're in of trans individuals having their civil rights rolled back at the state level. And I just commend Mandy Remington and the Corridor Community Action Network for their work in pulling that event together. And I think it was very meaningful for those who were able to be there and hear the messages of that evening. And thank you, Iowa City, for making sure the power was on in the park last night. But yeah, thank you.
Any other announcement or meeting that you attended?
Councillor Wyline, you had asked for the opportunity to speak to one of those items. This would be the appropriate time.
Yeah, so it was regarding, on the consent agenda six C for the protective doors on the buses. I had a chance to hear a variety of different, kind of like, perspectives and concerns from lots of different people who do work in our transit, specifically bus drivers. And this is something that's, I just wanted to point out that this is something that, especially since we had a pretty serious assault a few years back, that they've been asking for this for quite a while. And I'm just really happy that it, we're seeing the funding for it. And would just also want to point out, like, we're all very concerned about transit or the safety of our staff. And a cool bus fact that I learned recently is that the number one way to reduce violence against transit workers is fare-free transit. So I think just moving forward, really keeping in mind that, you know, we're concerned about safety, but it's not even just a, a way to ensure access for people to transit, but it's a way to keep our bus drivers and other transit workers safe. So that's what I wanted to say, yeah.
Good point. Any other council would like to report? Okay, move to item sixteen, a report from the city staff. We start with the city manager office.
No report tonight, just an official welcome to councillor Wyline. Look forward to working with you.
And city attorney?
I joined the same Andrew in welcoming councillor Wyline.
Thank you.
I'm going to guess what the city clerk has to say.
Ditto, and you'll probably get a lot of emails from me, so.
All right. Now, oh, we are in the last item. Who would like to put a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Alter?
Second.
Second by, we're going to give it to Wyline, yeah. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.